Hey guys, thanks for listening to Unsupervised. To all of our loyal listeners who have stuck with us through the rebranding of this podcast, we're very grateful and to all of our new listeners, welcome. In this episode, we interview city councilman Bryant Griffith. We get his views on his role in the community he serves. Enjoy. We're sitting here with Kennedale City Councilman Bryant Griffith. Sitting down for an interview, what's going on, man?
A little bit, a little bit of everything.
Long time waiting for this interview.
This one's been in the works for quite a while. Yeah. Just waiting, waiting for the right, the right moment. Yeah.
Well, I appreciate you guys having me.
That just says a lot about your life. You've had a lot of interesting things going on where we have something else to talk about or to interview you for. And now this one's kind of time sensitive because you have an election going on and we gotta get this or a campaign going on. We're trying to get the show recorded and out so you can kind of promote that. So is something you want to talk about?
Yeah. Uh, so yeah, I'm, I'm running for city council place four, which is the seat I currently hold in Kennedale. Um, and we've got for our entire election, we've got, I think seven candidates.
That's a lot. Is that normal?
Um, well, I, not for Kennedale, but um, I guess it just depends on kind of what's going on, what the climate's like. But uh, yeah, we've got two for mayor, two for place four and three candidates for place two.
Okay.
Yep.
So for that place, you're running against one other candidate. Okay. I got you. Okay. So what, what got you? I know we talked a little bit before we hit record. So I kind of have an idea of why you're doing this, why you're running for city council, but kind of back up and tell us what, what made you want to be in, I guess, for lack of better, I mean, it's politics. You're not running for senate or anything, at least right now, maybe, maybe in the future.
Yeah, I don't know about all that. Um, yeah. So I guess, you know, the, the driving factor for me in life is uh, is just uh, being in heavy pursuit of um, what, what I call, or what I believe are my spiritual gifts. Um, you know, so I'm, I'm a, uh, an Arlington native, uh, you know, I was born in, actually raised in Burleson for half of my life, I guess. And then we moved to the city when I was about 12.
He says to the city like, yeah, Burleson's like so far out in the country.
Well, at the time, once upon a time it was.
It's a suburb now.
He's a country boy moved to the city.
That's right. That's right. Um, still raised kind of like a country boy though.
I still talk to people who grew up in Arlington. Um, and they're much older now and they talked about how it was kind of a country town.
Yeah.
Back then. So we're not that far removed, definitely not Burleson.
Yeah. Well, so um, you know, I, I went to Pantego Christian Academy and um, started my faith walk there. And then uh, after I graduated, I did a year of college at East Texas Baptist and then moved on to military service. I did 10 years active duty in the Marine Corps. Um, and even through all that, I hadn't yet uh, really learned or understood what, what spiritual gifts are. Uh, which, which ones that I feel that had, I've been endowed with. Um, but post-service is when I started to learn that. So when I got out in 2018, uh, one of the, one of the biggest challenges, I think for service members is once you take your uniform off, you kind of have to redefine your identity and your purpose in life. Um, and, and kind of reestablish a new belonging to community.
Yeah.
And so I was, I was going through that. I was trying to figure out what it was that I loved so much about um, my time in the service. And of course it was the camaraderie and things of that nature, but um, really I think that camaraderie comes from uh, the, the depth of someone's capacity to serve his fellow man. Um, and so I started plugging into the local area. Uh, we moved to Kennedale. Um, and you know, just started trying to find ways to, to do that, to pour into other people, to pour into the community. Um, and as I started to learn that that wasn't just something that I loved or that I had a passion for, it was also something that I feel that God's called me to do in life is just serve my fellow man. Um, and so that's kind of how it.
Place four, it's, that's a, a position you currently hold.
That's correct.
But you weren't elected in that position.
No, actually there was a vacancy last July and uh, how that works is uh, if there's a vacancy, whether uh, you know, whatever the circumstances are, if uh, someone resigns or can't uh, fulfill the end of the term. Um, there's a um, opportunity for council to either leave the seat vacant, which most times actually causes unnecessary hardship. Um, just with voting and having a, you know, uh, uneven number of council.
Yeah.
Um, so when they, when they fill the position, that's called an appointment. Um, so last July I was appointed by the council.
How did you get into that position? I mean, to be a candidate to be appointed?
Yeah. So once a vacancy uh, comes available, um, they'll post the information. Um, and then uh, it's open to the public. Um, anyone can come in and submit an application. Their application gets reviewed. Um, the council takes it into executive session. They discuss the candidates, they do interviews. Um, and then at the end of that process, they decide who they, who they want to cast their vote towards. Um, and then you buy more majority vote, uh, that, that candidate becomes the new council member for the duration of the, the remaining duration of that term.
Yeah. So but were there a lot of candidates that applied for this? Like, is there a big outpouring from the community to want to get involved like this? Or through at least your, your time going through that, were there a lot of candidates that were, were chasing that position to be appointed?
Sometimes I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how many uh, applied at the time I was appointed. Um, I, I do know that it came down to myself and another individual. Uh, both of us were uh, kind of nominated in that session. Um, uh, by one, by majority vote, the, the vote was, the tie was broken by the mayor. Um, but uh, since then we've had some, some uh, council that resigned and moved on and uh, we did have quite a few people come in and uh, put in applications for those positions. So um, for the most part, we usually have.
It takes a special person to, to get into that, kind of this entry level of local politics. Because so many people have an opinion, but they're not willing to, to serve, not willing to donate and put in their time to their community for nothing. But they all have an opinion, you know, that, and half the time they don't even vote. So it, it does take a special person. And that's why I asked if, if there's a whole outpouring of community members that want to get involved because like here locally for us, like you don't see that. A lot of people talk and a lot of people will bash who's running. It's like, what other, what other options are there? You know, there's, there's not a lot of people getting involved in local community.
Yeah. And I think there's a, a lot of factors that play into that. You know, I think um, you, you, there's a lot of different factors. I mean, you know, one is, I think people generally, if, if you look at society right now and the climate, uh, you know, if you did a poll on how people feel about politics in, in general, whether it's local, state, federal. You know, and I, and I, and admittedly, uh, I don't like politics. I, I mostly despise politics. I don't consider myself to be a politician. I understand that I am now part of that, but uh, it's just not how I see myself and it's just not um, agreeable with me, the, the, what's become the, you know, normal conduct of, of political governance and things of that nature, but.
Someone getting into it with an agenda, personal agenda, not getting it to truly serve and be the voice for the community.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, again, you guys, you'd asked, you know, what kind of what got me into it. Originally it was just that passion to serve, a door, an opportunity opened itself. I felt like God was opening this door and calling me to step into it. So I did without having any kind of long-term idea of how, how long I'll be here. He may call me somewhere else next. I have no idea. I just know that uh, I have a commitment to, to my fellow man, like I said, and um, you know, my campaign slogan, I, you know, I guess if you want to call it that, more, more actually my mantra is serving the people, not the politics.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that's what gets forgotten. Um, you know, it was just, again, there's, there's that frustration, I think, or mistrust between the people and those who are elected to serve them. Um, there's this idea that uh, I, I think that people just have a misunderstanding of what true leadership is about. Um, and the epitome of that leadership is, you know, found in the life of Jesus Christ.
Yeah.
Um, is to serve others, not to be served. Um, but you, you also hit on another good note, you know, too, it's, it's not just the commitment to show up um, and to have an opinion and to cast a vote. It's also to be able to stand in it, you know? So a lot of times you'll find on, on playing the politics, um, people hesitate to speak their truth. Uh, they'll say what sounds right, what sounds good or what sounds right, what's, you know, what's.
Easy to make most political issues, like just take your popular one and a popular opinion, there's easy ways to word it around to sound like the right way. Where, yeah, you're just talking about right or wrong. Like if I word it this way, then who's gonna, you know, post on Facebook and say, no, 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 that you're wrong because of this, this and that. And it makes them look like, yeah, the bad guy.
Well, and they'll dance around uh, topics too, you know, like touchy topics, taxes is one of them. You know, you get a group of politicians in a room, talk about taxes. Uh, you can have an hour-long conversation and not really get any real fruit out of that conversation, meaning the people listening and watching are not going to be edified or educated anymore, less than they were before that conversation took place. And I think that's a point of failure. Um, but also, you know, to your point, Tony, is the idea of why people don't get involved. It's really hard. It's easy to have an opinion. Everybody's got one. It's hard to stand by that opinion. It's hard to qualify that opinion. Um, and, and even harder to stand firm in it when it's unpopular. Um, and then there's, you know, again, right and wrong, but also what's necessary. And sometimes what's necessary is not popular. Um, and, and.
Or easy to stomach.
That's absolutely, absolutely not. Um, you know.
Like you mentioned with polit, I mean, with taxes.
Yeah.
Taxes is a tough one, but it takes money to operate and to build a city and to grow a city and to, and to just maintain a city where it's at.
You'll see negative campaign ads. All they want to do is raise your taxes. Yeah. Well, that's kind of an open ended, but that's not necessarily, like, why are they raising your taxes? I mean, it's easy to get somebody, don't vote for them, they're going to raise your taxes.
Yeah.
But that's kind of the whole point. And it, it's hard to stomach being in politics in the social media age. Because you have to, to realize, like ma- maybe not as much directed at you being a city councilman in Kennedale. Uh, I don't know, there, there may be a lot more, but just in general, people criticizing the, the, the city hall or whatever, you know, as a whole government and having the foresight to not jump on there and say, no, you have this wrong, this is why. And then get in a back and forth on social media. And then you are kind of angry and then you have it right there for somebody's screenshot or whatever. Look, Brian Griffith can't even, you know, hold his cool. He's sitting here being uh, what are they called? Keyboard Karen or whatever.
Yeah.
Or I guess you're arguing with a keyboard Karen.
Yeah. But not understanding that it's a passion and that's your passion coming out. Yeah.
Yeah.
I couldn't imagine, I mean, even for us, we don't, you know, most of our podcasts and shows do not get very political because of that in this council culture, it's really hard. It's, it's, it's tough water to tread. So you know, most people want to steer away from it, but us knowing you, you're not a guy that's going to steer away from, from a little controversy.
No, in fact, I've already, you know, so I, like I said, I've got appointed in July, right? From July to December. Or January, I guess I'll say, from July to, to, to January. I've already been uh, accused of several things. I've been investigated twice, once by the district attorney and once by the attorney general's office. And all of those things uh, I stood in front of. So I did catch a lot of grief on Facebook. I had people dragging my name through the mud, saying all kinds of things about me. Um, and you know, uh, you know, being completely humble and transparent here, um, it, it was frustrating. It was very disheartening uh, to, to, to be on the receiving end of that. Um, and I think a lot of times again, why people don't get involved is for those very reasons. Um, and, and to take it a step further, another reason why there's mistrust is because the reaction you'll get from most politicians, uh, that what they're coached to do is to stay ahead of it by disengaging, not, don't, you know, don't feed it, don't give it any energy, don't get caught up on social media or responding to posts and this. I didn't do that. I did the exact opposite, despite what I was told, despite what I was coached, despite what I was, you know, hey, th- this is how to handle that. I took it head-on. I went straight on Facebook. I answered every single question, every single comment that I possibly could. I sent, you know, information out that was being asked of me. Um, I didn't have to do any of that. I have, you know, everybody has constitutional rights, right? There's the rights of the accused. But in order to foster that trust and to uh, you know, demonstrate that transparency and, and show faith to the people that I'm serving. Um, I felt, you know, sometimes it's necessary to forego your own comforts or your own, your own rights. Um, to serve the greater good of the community. And in this particular situation, there, I didn't see a reason for me to not, to not do that. And I, I saw more of a benefit for the people, for me to forego those comforts and those rights that I have. Um, and just trying to be as transparent as I can, just so that they can see that. Um, you know, everything's up to snuff. When it, when it comes to me, I toe a very, a very straight and hard line. Um, and I hold everyone around me to that same standard. Um, and I, and I, and I welcome and expect that out of those around me too. I need that because none of us are perfect. We all need.
Which is very unpopular in politics. But it's exactly what the community wants and what the community should see in you. When they're going to elect an official and elect someone to take the, you know, this place for is somebody that's going to be transparent and honest with them.
Yeah. And somebody that uh, you know, doesn't forget that uh, you, you serve the people and that means that, you know, that, that's how you have to handle it. You have to demonstrate that. There's only one way to do it. Um, so uh, yeah, but those are great uh, points on, you know, that's why a lot of times people don't get involved and uh, you know, with local politics, it, we're, we're about six square miles, um, just under 10,000 residents and um, you know, the, the time commitment. Um, if you're just trying to meet the commitment, it's, you know, you got one meeting a month. Uh, unless we have a special meeting that comes up, you get your packet 72 hours before the meeting. So um, you know, you if you're just doing the minimum to get through, it's not really that much of a commitment, but one thing for me is that when I commit myself to somebody or something, I usually give all of myself, all of my resources, everything I can to fulfill that role and responsibility. Um, that's just who I am. Um, I feel convicted in that way that, you know, if you say you're going to do something, if you say you're going to be somewhere, you, you, you do it. Um, with everything you got.
When you're so plugged into the community anyways, living there, raising a family there.
Yeah.
Like this is personal for you and it has been. So that's, that's something that you, that the community should take away is that you're fully vested there. You, you have a family, you're going to be there for a really long time. Even outside of the time that you're going, going to serve this community, when that time's up, you're still going to be in the community. You're still going to have a family there.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's the other part of it. I don't, um, you know, I've only, like I said, I got appointed in July. So you know, one of the things you do when you're campaigning is you, you know, just like you do when you're going for a promotion board or something like that. You're kind of quantify your bullet points, you know, you're, you know, this is what I've done, this is what I'm going to do. And it's based on a history of experience and performance. Um, and, and, and I, I say that because uh, I think a lot of times people think that they need some sort of stature or position uh, in their community to be able to make an impact. And that's certainly not the case. Um, even before we, you know, before I, I was appointed, uh, we were participating in the Keep Kennedale Beautiful program. Uh, we were looking for other ways to serve the community. We, we don't, uh, we use our business the same way. Um, we all, all over DFW, but we try to focus on Arlington and Kennedale and the smaller communities around. Um, donating goods, using the recycled funds to give to nonprofits. Um, you know, you and I've met at, at, crossed paths at several events in the nonprofit communities. But um, point is, is if you're waiting for some sort of um, position of authority to be able to have an impact on your community, uh, I would argue you're never going to have the impact. Um, it's, you either got it or you don't. Uh, it's either who you are or it's not. Um, so for me, whether I win this election or not is, is inconsequential to my commitment. Um, they're still going to see me. They're still going to hear my, my name. I'm still going to be involved all over Kennedale.
Do you want to get into more of that? What, with your business and, and, and what you are doing with the community and in the community?
Um, yeah, I mean, just, just not too long ago, we, you know, we, we adopted, so the Keep Kennedale Beautiful program has a adopt a spot. A lot of communities have that. Um, so businesses or individuals, families can come and adopt a stretcher road. And they basically come and serve and keep it clean. So we use our waste management company to do that. Um, there's a section of road that hadn't been adopted that uh, it, it tends to get littered quite a bit. Um, so we go out there a couple of times a month or, or more frequent if necessary and clean it out and um, you know, we're trying to hone in on what the needs are for some of the nonprofits and some of the uh, um, pantries and things like that, in ways that we can bring in our resources from our business and bring those to Kennedale, um, to kind of help. And we've talked about looking for uh, our first brick and mortar. Um, and uh, we're, we're trying to find a place in Kennedale to be able to establish that.
So establish your business in.
Yeah. And in the, yeah. And in the interim, we'll, we'll, we'll move our, our office so that uh, the, the, you know, the city can benefit from the sales tax and things of that nature. Um, so just whatever little ways that we can press in and, and, and lean in and help the community. Um, that's what we're going to do. We, we back to school bash last year. Um, our, our company donated a thousand dollars to help raise funds for the backpacks and uh, school supplies, things that the families need. Um, we'll, we'll continue doing that. Um, and, and that's just, that's just who we are.
Outside of uh, serving and the obvious reasons that you want to be involved, what are some of your campaign issues that you, you want to take up with? Like what, what specifically are you trying to?
My focuses.
Yeah. Focuses um, on Kennedale in general.
Yeah. So um, I think my, my personal focuses are always going to be um, business, accountability and community. Um, so that's just kind of like the wave top, right? So um, we need to increase our economic development 100%. Um, we just have to. Um, but I, I think this is again, one of those, one of those deals where people will give you the sound bites, uh, when it comes to taxes and things like that, but they won't give you the strategy.
Yeah.
They won't give you the details. Um, whether it's because they don't know or they don't have the experience. But I'm a, I'm an entrepreneur. Um, you guys know a lot of entrepreneurs. At the end of the day, um, businesses are not going to press themselves into areas that don't show promise in, in terms of uh, buyer's market, uh, a need.
And support.
Those kinds of support, those kinds of things are important, right? So it's one of those arguments which came first, the chicken or the egg. We can speculate all day and say, we need economic development. We need to bring in businesses. You know, not rooftops, more businesses. Well, the bottom line is those things go hand in hand.
Yeah.
If you don't have buyers in your community, you're not going to have businesses. If you do have businesses and you don't have buyers, the businesses are going to fail. It's that simple. Um, it's, it's not complicated. It's not a complicated concept. So um, my strategy for the business growth is to uh, you know, one, let the surrounding communities know we're open for business. Um, our Economic Development Corporation, which I also sit on, um, we have uh, grant opportunities where we're trying to help invest into small businesses and help them get on their feet and help them be competitive in the market. Um, and then also looking for community partners that want to come in, businesses that want to establish uh, maybe their first or second location, um, and help stimulate that as well. Um, and, and then coupling that with some residential growth, you have to have it. Um, and so there are some uh, things on the horizon, some projects where we'll have developers come in and building residence. And it's important to show those developers also that we're open for business. Um, Kennedale has a history of um, of being, and I'm just being transparent and honest here, but they have a history of being uh, difficult to work with. And not necessarily just with the process of permitting and licensing and all those kinds of things, but also uh, when uh, zoning requests come across, uh, they, you know, also often get voted down. Um, and you do that enough times with a project or a piece of property that's available for development, developers are going to stop looking to do business there.
Yeah.
Um, you gotta send that message that you're open for business, you're willing to work together for a common goal. And the common goal is to serve the people. Um, so using business in a strategy to also um, kind of back to taxes, that's kind of how you will alleviate the tax rate.
Yeah.
Um, or seek tax rate cuts. Um, you just, you just gotta have the growth. If you don't have it, you just won't get there.
Yeah. Allow some of these businesses to take a little bit of that burden off of the community.
Yeah.
And I imagine in a small community like Kennedale, that this is, this is tough to get the community to buy into is this growth. Most small communities are, and I imagine Kennedale's no, no different.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. Yeah. It's a, it's very hard. You know, the other thing with that too. So you know, um, so, so some of the other focus points, the micro points, our infrastructure is in dire need of, of, of restoration and, and uh, you know, we've got um, a lot of projects on the horizon. We're trying to get those delineated with strategy on, you know, what takes precedence, what's priority? And then the affordability of that, right? Cause the more projects you have to have, the more tax revenue you have to have to be able to pay for them.
True.
Um, and also revenue will impact your growth. Uh, if you're, if you're, if your infrastructure is not prepared for the growth, you, you, you can't have it. You have to have both of those things. You also have to have the tax revenue to, to have the growth. So it kind of goes hand in hand.
Yeah.
Um, um, but, but backing off that a little bit and going into accountability. Um, you know, there's, I'll give you an example. We just, we just recently voted on some town home developments in our city. Now there's, there's a, 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 a voice in the community that uh, does not like the idea of town homes or apartment dwellings, anything that's kind of dense growth. Um, you know, you were talking about people not wanting to welcome these things in and, and I certainly uh, feel for those people and understand that. Um, but, but something I think again, going into the details, the unpopular conversation points, some of the things that people don't consider or think about is that you know, property owners have rights too. And so it's easy, again, everyone has an opinion. It's easy to have an opinion on, well, that's not who we are and we don't like that. But you can't discriminate on, we're not going to allow any of that here. And when it comes to a property owner, if a property owner comes in and they have a development plan and they meet all the UDC code requirements, um, the zoning request change matches our comprehensive plan. Um, and it, and, and it gets, you know, it's going to go through the process.
Yeah.
And it's going to have uh, other boards looking at it and making recommendations. And then it comes to us. And if it meets all those requirements, um, and that person's complying with all the, the rules and regulations, uh, really, we don't have a right to tell them, no. Now, the other side of that argument with some people is, well, if there's a loud enough voice in the community that says, we don't want this, then you should vote it down. But at the same time, for me, and this is just speaking for me and it might be unpopular. And this might be something that causes me to lose votes, but at the end of the day, I will never infringe on anyone's constitutional rights, period.
Yeah.
Period. I don't cave to, you know, it, the law is the law and that's it. And it, and, and, and that's the oath that I've taken is to defend, to defend those rights of individuals, whether the masses like it or not.
Yeah.
Um, and that's really hard to have that conversation with some people. They, you know, there's the emotional aspect of it. Absolutely understand that. I, I don't want town homes in my backyard either.
Yeah.
If there's property butted up to mine and it's a sizable enough acreage and they want to come in and put in some apartment complex or town home, I'm, I'm not going to like it. But at the end of the day, if I'm the one casting the vote on it, I'm always casting that vote conscientiously, knowing that the person who purchased that property has a right to use it.
Yeah.
Um, certainly so if it meets all the, the codes and requirements and things of that nature. So um, that's kind of, you know, again, as part, part of the accountability part, for me, it's like that line I said, I tell, I really mean it when I say it. Um, I, I hate to, to have an, you know, be unpopular for that. I hate for that to drive voters away, but one thing I would encourage them to understand is I'm going to fight for every individual when, when those kinds of things.
And their constitutional rights as well.
Absolutely. 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 And so.
If there's developments infringing on citizens of Kennedale.
Absolutely. You're going to fight for them.
Absolutely. It's a two-way street. Um, so I just.
Well, to go back to the point of, you know, bringing in these multifamilies and, you know, you talked earlier about rooftops and that, how all of this works together is, you said Kennedale's six square miles?
That's right.
It's a small area.
That's right.
In a really, I keep wanting to say in a really populated area surrounded by Mansfield, Fort Worth, parts of Arlington.
Yeah. So if, and what people will, will have to understand, and I'm sure that this is, is part of your argument is when you have such a small area and you're trying to divide up the tax dollars, you need, you need more families there. You need people to shop. You need more businesses. Well, if you're only building single-family homes everywhere, you're going to fully develop that area. And there will be no, you'll be landlocked and there'll be no more space in such a small area. So there is a need for that. As well as the factor of affordability.
That's right.
Because home costs are through the roof now.
That's right.
And in small communities, it. And in small communities, it, you, you really need that affordable.
That's right.
Living to help support these businesses. Because if you don't, then again, your businesses don't get supported, right?
That's right.
And we live in a similar, similar situation in the town we live in, relatively population wise, the same size. Not quite as close to Fort Worth as Kennebale is, but we deal with the same thing where school, schools were wanting to be built and bonds were being rejected because they're like, that's, there's just, our, our town's getting too big. But we have developments popping up everywhere. And that's what our superintendent was arguing. Was that, well, we need more schools. We're overcrowded. And they said, we'll just stop the developments. Like we, you can't just do that. The town's gonna grow. You don't want to build restaurants and infrastructure because more people will come. Which is true, but they're coming anyways. And, and right where Kennebale is, their goal in their daily commute is not going to Kennebale, but that's, you go right through, I've been through Kennebale tons of times, coming, going to Mansfield from Fort Worth or vice versa. You have that traffic going through there, which is one opportunity for business, but you have to keep up with the infrastructure because it's not just Kennebale residents driving on Kennebale roads.
That's right.
So you have, you have all that need and, and people are like, you build it, more people are gonna come, more people are gonna, it's gonna drive up traffic, which is true to an extent. But you have to build it for the people already coming.
Yeah. And we, you know, we kind of talked a little bit like strategy, right? So one of the things I bring to the table is in my 10 years in the Corps, I, I was a, um, a, a strategy planner. I mean, I, I planned, um, strategic movements. We did contingency planning, strategy planning. Um, and, and my, and my point there with that is it's about putting the right things in the right place, right? And, and playing to your strengths. So, you know, you, you, you made a good point, Tony, um, about, um, uh, affordable housing, about, um, the exchange between, uh, the more dense portions of the, the, the city compared to the not so dense portions, right? And with that, you know, we, we just went through redoing our comprehensive plan. Now, comprehensive plan was put together by a steering committee that was established with, with residents. They steered the whole committee. The outcome from that is where we've identified what are the wants, what are the needs? And where's the proper place for things, right? So like your town center for us, we need to develop it out. We need to put some businesses in there, but we also need to feed it with shoppers. So a city, when you look at a city, and this is just city planning one-on-one, right? Where's the proper place for most of your density? If you look at downtown Arlington, for example, or the district, what do you have surrounding that area mostly?
Multi-family.
Have a lot more multifamily, right? Because those are the walkable spaces.
Yeah.
Those are the areas where there's, uh, mixed use.
Foot traffic.
Or urban village, foot traffic. That's right. That's right. So, um, you want to marry those things together because they go together. It makes sense. Um, now as you grow out, that's where you'll expand into the larger property sizes, you know, uh, single family and then like ranch style, um, you know, more acreage, things of that nature. So it's about putting the right things in the right place.
Yeah.
Um, and, and you made a very valid point with, uh, you know, Business 287. Anybody who knows Kennebale, we call that Kennebale Parkway. Everybody knows that thing cuts right through the center of town, right? So, um, you know, we talking about infrastructure. We've talked a lot about the little school road project and why it's important. Now, my main argument for that project is to, uh, help with our public safety because we don't have a bridge that goes up. So there's a Union Pacific rail that goes right alongside Business 287.
Yeah.
There are no cross sections where you can get around, over or under that train when it comes and stops, and it happens all the time. So when our first responders have to address that, that west side of town, they, they have to go around it. And that adds response time, right? And which decreases your, your public safety metrics, right? Okay. So it's two parts. By investing in Little School Road, we're, we're doing, it's multifaceted. You're creating a four-way stop. Cause right now Little School Road dead ends to 287. You create a four-way stop. Well, what usually happens at a four-way stop? It's a perfect place for commerce.
Yeah.
You also put a stop in. So in terms of traffic and keeping Business 287 from being a fly-through, you're slowing that traffic down as it comes in closer to our schools and closer to our town center. Cause now you've added another stop in there, right? And then you've got the commerce. So all those drivers and people who are coming through have a place to shop, stop for, you know, convenience stores or whatever it is, it's gonna be their place to eat. Um, and then.
You start to grab that money from people that are just passing through.
That's right.
And now you're getting those people to come to stop and, and, and get some of their dollars.
There's so many good reasons why that's an important investment, primarily public safety. But this, the secondary impact is gonna be good for commerce, good for growth, and to slow down the traffic going through 287. You slow people down, they're more, they're more apt to stop. Those are gonna be paying attention to what's going on there, right?
Yeah.
Um, same thing with the section of Kennebale that's up by 287 and 820. Um, developing that out with, with more commerce and the, the idea of what we call other people's money.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you got shoppers from out of Kennebale coming in and generating that sales tax revenue. In fact, um, I, I believe our number, our, our two top, uh, tax revenue generators in our city are apartment complex and QT. 287, 820.
I stop at that one all the time.
Keep stopping there.
Getting, yeah, that's just getting right off of 20. Getting there and then getting right back. I'm not even going into Kennebale.
That's right. Yeah, right there on the service road. You don't even have to, you're just on and off right there. Boom, boom. Um, so, yeah, I mean, there's a great deal of strategy in that. And you focus on the areas that are gonna help, uh, achieve that tax rate, ho- hopefully that tax rate cut, you know, to, to roll it back. Um, but you can't just, you know, and you ask somebody, oh, well, when they start talking about taxes, what's politicians gonna tell you? Yeah, I'm, I'm for cutting taxes. That's what I'm gonna campaign on. Well, I'm not gonna make those kind of promises. I can make the promise to strategize in a way that will bring us there.
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna promise we'll cut the tax. And then at the end of the season, when we're looking at our budget, we have to gut the budget and kill programs and kill infrastructure needs because I promise we're gonna roll it back. And all too often, that's what you get with politicians. They don't want to have the hard conversation, which is what we're doing right now.
Cut, cutting the, the tax dollars and cutting the cost only cuts, cuts out of your budget, cuts programs.
And I'm all for.
Absolutely.
Lowering taxes. I'd love to. I mean, there's ways you can do that.
But operating.
Taxes, yeah. But you have to, like you said, you have to have a strategy. Okay. We're gonna cut this, these taxes, but it's gonna pull away from this or that. And some people find they don't care, less government, all that good stuff. But right now, very few cities, towns, whatever, have an overabundance of money. So it's not like you just have money sitting aside. I mean, you do, but it's not like you have a ton of money where tax cuts are just gonna go into that. Like that money has to come from somewhere. You have a clean budget you have to keep.
Well, also with that, if you've maintained a healthy budget, that'll get, because you gotta, you know, you're gonna have your funds and reserves, right? And have an emergency fund. You have your funds.
But that's part of your budget. You need.
Absolutely, absolutely. So for Kennebale, up until recently, that has not been the case. And so one of the challenges we have moving forward, when we talk about cutting taxes, is understanding that there's, uh, in the past has been some, some challenges with how that's been managed. So those funds have been depleted and misused or whatever the case is. But at the end of the day, um, what's important now, moving forward is addressing it, is putting, filling those coffers up, preparing yourself for the future so that you can address things when the appropriate time is. You know, when, when you don't, when you neglect infrastructure, you might say, oh, we don't have the money for fixing this problem right now. So let's just not do it. Okay. And then what happens to the market in the next two years, the next five years, the next 10 years? So something that would have cost you $5 million to address now.
Mm-hmm.
Not to say it won't be hard, but guess what? In three to five years, that's gonna jump from $5 million to 15 million.
Yeah.
Um, or, or who knows? It just depends on what's going on in the market at the time. And we've seen a record high inflation rates in just the last few years, um, cause everything that happened with COVID and all that. So.
And that, that seems like.
Seeing a lot of that.
It's probably gonna make it tougher for you to combat.
Absolutely.
When those costs continue to go up, as, as a council member, you have to, you have to navigate that properly to what's the correct rate to raise taxes to keep up with this inflation and to continue to maintain and grow at the same time.
And that's, and that's why, so we've had a lot of, uh, tax debate among candidates and, and just on social media. And, uh, you know, we've gotten some questioning from local outlets, media outlets and stuff. And that's been the one thing that I think people are missing is, you know, I, I, there, there's, there's two sides of the same coin. You know, one side will say, well, the tax bill went up, you know, 15%. That's the soundbite they like to use. That's the metric. They say, well, the individual homeowner, you know, their, their tax rate or their tax bill, I should say, had gone up 15%. That's what they're saying. But the truth is, we, our tax rate stayed the same, which in terms of strategy is a huge win because we have infrastructure needs that have been neglected. We have deficits in, that we're trying to address. Right? And in lieu of those things and the increased costs and inflation that we're experiencing right now, we were able to keep the rate exactly the same and still achieve addressing all of those needs that we just talked about. Now, the overall tax bill goes up for other reasons, not just your tax rate. But you know, TAD comes in and does their tax evaluations on, on your property, your, on your properties, right? So your property value goes up. So you're still, you're gonna end up paying more, but it's because the value went up.
Yeah.
Now.
But you, as a, a city, don't have control over that. And that's what so many people, they, they want to see, we, we're dealing with the same thing here, is they want to see their tax bills drop or not go up. You know, in worst case scenario, not go up, even when the values go up. So you're asking the city to cut the rates to match the inflation.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, and, and so, and so when it comes to politics and debating and saying, you know, who's right, wrong or whatever, that is the argument they'll make. They will say, well, no, the city council is responsible for the tax bill going up because they should have done this to offset that.
Yeah.
Now, don't get me wrong. If the perspective is with, like I said, we talked about deficits, infrastructure needs, inflation rates, how to combat all that with your, with a healthy budget, right?
Yeah.
People who don't look at the whole picture will, will make that argument and, and say, well, the value went up and your tax rate stayed the same. So now there's surplus. That's the thought process, but there's really not. Not in the way that you would think.
Yeah.
Now, in some cities, that's not necessarily the case. I've already identified that if you had a healthy budget going into it, if you were strategically positioned to do so, when the values go up, you could roll the tax rate back. And a lot of cities in Tarrant County did do that, which is another reason why the soundbite i- i- sounds good because Kennebale went from, uh, seven, seventh highest in the county to number three. So we have that third highest tax rate in all of Tarrant County. And that's another soundbite. Sounds bad, but guess what? If you look at Kennebale itself, we're at a 20-plus year all-time low in our tax rate. So you gotta have some perspective. You gotta be willing to look at the whole picture and not just cherry pick the parts that make your point valid.
Cities have different agendas. They're in different parts of their lifespan.
Yeah.
Well, the Kennebale needs things that North Richardson Hills or Benbrook don't necessarily.
They've outgrown, grown beyond that. And you're not looking at their tax base.
You have more residents to.
And you, to your point earlier, the previous administration weren't handling things properly. It put Kennebale in a situation correct that you couldn't cut your, maybe you could have cut them if things had been handled properly the past 10 years.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And with the strategy that we have, um, and, and, you know, God willing, my input, we'll, we'll get there. We'll get there. It's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when. It's just good strategy, good planning and a commitment to getting there.
Yeah.
Um, and it takes a community. It takes everybody to be a part of that. So.
When does this, uh, election take place in Kennebale?
It's gonna be in May. So, yeah.
Yeah. So not, not too far after this episode is gonna be posted. So this is part of the, the time of the episode, we probably want to make sure we covered everything you wanted to talk about. Cause I know you, you have a plan in your head. We sit down, start talking. Sometimes you get way off base. Sometimes things aren't covered. So what's something we may not have talked about yet that you want to make sure gets covered? Anything specific?
Well, I, I, you had asked earlier what kind of my focuses are. And, uh, the broad stroke, like I said, was business, um, accountability and, and, um, and community. And for the community aspect of that is kind of like I've indicated, it, it takes the community to achieve these things. Um, that means rolling up your sleeves and doing the work. Um, I've been pressing into the Kennebale Chamber, um, and, and Economic Development Corporation, uh, trying to get out in the community and, you know, just rally people to shop local, to help their neighbors, to be part of what's going on in Kennebale, to serve on our boards when there's vacancies. Um, those are the, you know, the little things that get overlooked, um, that are, they make a big impact. Um, so the, the community aspect is just, uh, you know, sowing seeds. You know, trying to be, be that, uh, example for people that have the hard conversations, listen to each other, um, work together so that we can achieve what we're, we're setting out to achieve. And that's just one thing we, we didn't really touch on, but I just want people to understand how important that is.
What are some ways that the community and our, our listeners really can, some ways they can get involved? Uh, whether it's through your campaign or just in the community in general with you or, and/or your business?
Yeah, you know, with our campaign, um, I, I've put out, you know, a link for donors or they're always welcome to help us. Um, but, uh, you know, just sharing our message, um, with friends and family, people that are in Kennebale. Um, as far as, uh, the Kennebale community specifically, um, you know, just being inspired. You know, like I said, it, if, if you're waiting, uh, if you're waiting for that time to be a leader, you're already missing it. Um, you just commit yourself, be inspired, be passionate, get involved. You know, just literally something for everyone, um, whether it's KKB or, you know, um, volunteering at, at your local church or, uh, you know, your pantry or, you know, putting your name in the hat for, uh, a board seat that's open, whether it's P and Z. And if you don't have experience, that's okay. You know, I, experience is important, but what's more important is a heart to serve.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, that's really the message I want to get across to people.
Yeah, and for sure, go out and vote because I've always been told, you don't vote, you don't have a right to complain. Even if it's not your guy who won or whatever, don't complain if you didn't vote. And we, and we know like, you can even talk about presidential elections. You can go all the way down to local city council elections. It'd surprise you, the number of people actually vote as opposed to who can vote.
Who are eligible, yeah.
Who are eligible to, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. No, that's, I mean, spot on. You know, aside from your commitment to serve, I think starts with casting your vote. Um, that's just, it's your right. It's the one thing that, you know, it's like your, your American birthright, so to speak. You know, it's, it's, uh, if you want to make an impact, that's where it starts. Um, but yeah, absolutely.
We'll put, uh, a place to donate to your campaign as well as all your social media profiles. So people can follow you. All that's in the description box below. Anything else, guys?
I appreciate you guys having me here and look forward to meeting with you some more.
Yeah, it's been an honor interviewing Brian.
Thank you for coming in, man.
Hey, thanks for having me.